Good evening and welcome to the Municipality of Anchorage zoning Board of Examiners and Appeals meeting for April 11th, 2024. Will the Secretary please call the roll?
Ellen McKay.
Here.
Dave Hale.
Here.
Brian Flynn.
Here.
Travis Santo.
Here.
Brian Bennett. Andrew Ramadall is excused. You have a quorum. Thank you.
Are there any disclosures for this evening's cases? Wait, you gotta turn your mic on.
Brian Bennett, I will be abstaining voting on the minutes and the consent agenda.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none? Because we don't have enough members here to vote on the minutes or the consent agenda, not enough people were in attendance for those two things, we will be... We won't be acting on those this evening. And I would entertain a motion to move the annual election of officers to the end of the agenda, please.
So moved.
You gotta hit the button.
Oh.
And you missed.
Second.
Let's see.
Moved by Dave Hale. Second? Seconded by Brian Bennett. Is there any objection to moving the annual election of officers to the end of the agenda? Seeing none, we will do that. And then, the next order of business is... are the public hearings. And because we only have five members in attendance, that's what's called a short And when there is a short board, we offer the petitioner the chance to postpone to the next regular agenda. This should occur within 30 days and it doesn't require re-noticing the case. If the petitioner is willing to postpone but unable to attend the next available meeting within 30 days, the petitioner has a one-time-only option to choose the next date certain that he or she can attend at no extra fee. So, that being said, go back to the public hearings. The first case, case 2024-0020 MX and B Development, has been withdrawn and will not be heard this evening. And the third case, case 2024-0031 Alaska Serendipity LLC, has been postponed by the petitioner to a date uncertain. So that leaves just the one case for this evening, case 2024-0028. The petitioner here? Okay, they indicate they are. So we will continue. And there is a process, a procedure, by which the public may speak to the board. After the presentation... after the staff presentation is completed on the public hearing item, the Chair will ask for the applicant to state their case. The applicant, including all of his or her representatives, has 10 minutes for the presentation and may reserve time for rebuttal at the end of the public hearing. Throughout the proceeding, the burden of proof rests upon the applicant who must convince the board by a preponderance of evidence that the variance should be granted. A concurring vote of a majority of the fully constituted membership of the board minus those excused by conflicts of interest shall be required to grant a variance. For the variance to be granted, all eight standards must be substantially met, and on the conclusion of the applicant's presentation, the board members and the staff may then direct questions to the applicant through the Chair. The Chair will then open the public hearing to public... will then open the hearing to public testimony on the issue. Persons who wish to testify will follow time limit established in the rules of procedure. Representatives of groups like community councils, PTAs, have five minutes and individuals have three minutes. When your testimony is complete, you may be asked questions by the board. You may only testify once on any issue unless questioned by the board. Time is kept by the Secretary. The display at the front will be green to within one minute of the time allowed, then will turn yellow. At this time, you should begin to sum up your testimony, and at the end of the allowed time, the light will turn red and a tone will sound. An individual may have appeal rights relating to any action the zoning Board of Examiners and Appeals takes. Parties have 30 days from the date of mailing or other distribution of the decision to file an appeal to Superior Court. Okay? So, in that first case, because... let's see. Would the petitioner come forward, please? Do you... do you wish to continue?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I need for the moment. So, the first case, the only case, is case 2024-0028, Tom Locklayer. The... let's see. Will the staff please describe the notice given in this case?
Thank you, Madam Chair. March 18th, 2024, a total of 203 public hearing notices were mailed in accordance with the procedures of AMC 21-03020H. Notices of this writing, no public comments have been received. The Sand Lake Community Council did not provide comments on this case.
Are there any objections to the sufficiency of notice in this case? Seeing none, will the staff please present the case?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Deckmasters, representing the owner, Tom Locklayer, is requesting a dimensional variance from AMC 21-06020 to allow an existing second-story deck to encroach three feet into the five-foot side setback. In January of 2024, Deckmasters LLC applied for a building permit to reconstruct the existing second-story deck that needs repairs. It was found that a previous permit issued in 2008, 080143, for the enclosure of a portion of the covered front entry had not been closed out. Prior to issuance of the new building permit, comments still outstanding from 2008 needed to be addressed. In 2008, the encroachment of the deck into the side setback and a shed within the rear utility easement had been noted as needing to be corrected. Therefore, these comments were brought forward to be addressed prior to issuance of the 2024 building permit. This variance would legalize the previous encroachment and allow the second-story deck to be reconstructed. In order for the zoning Board of Examiners and Appeals to approve the variance, the applicant must state with particularity the relief sought and must specify the facts or circumstances that are alleged to show that the application substantially meets the following eight standards. Standard A: There exist exceptional or extraordinary physical circumstances of the subject property, including but not limited to streams, wetlands, or slope, and those circumstances are not applicable to other land in the same zoning district. Standard A is not met. There are no extraordinary physical circumstances of the subject property. There are no streams, wetlands, or slopes that are applicable to this property and the surrounding land in the same zoning district. Standard B: Because of these physical circumstances, the strict application of this code creates an exceptional or undue hardship upon the property owner and would deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties in the same district under the terms of the zoning ordinance. Standard B is not met. The physical circumstances defined in standard A above do not apply to this property. However, the removal of the existing second-story deck would create an exceptional or undue hardship for the property owner. Decks are a right commonly enjoyed by other properties in the R1 district but are to remain outside of the setbacks. Standard C: The hardship is not self-imposed, and special condition and circumstances do not result from the actions of the applicant, and such conditions and circumstances do not merely constitute inconvenience. This hardship is self-imposed. The property owners purchased the home in August of 2002. According to aerial imagery and MOA property appraisal information, the deck was constructed sometime after the summer of 2002 and prior to September of 2004 without a building permit. Standard D: The variance, if granted, will not adversely affect the use of adjacent property as permitted under this code. Standard D is met. The second-story deck has existed in this location for approximately 18 years. There have been no complaints from the adjacent property owners to date. Standard E: The variance, if granted, does not change the character of the zoning district where the property is located, is in keeping with the intent of the code, and does not permit a use not otherwise permitted in the district in which the property lies. Standard E is met. The variance does not change the character of the zoning district or the intent of the code. A second-story deck is a feature commonly enjoyed in this neighborhood. Standard F: The variance, if granted, does not adversely affect the health, safety, and welfare of the people of the municipality. This structure is encroached three feet into the five-foot side setback without any known impacts to the health, safety, or welfare of the people of the municipality. Standard G: Persons with disabilities are provided with access as required by the Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA, and reasonable accommodations. Standard G is met. This standard is not applicable to a single-family residence. Standard H: The variance, granted, is the minimum variance that will make possible reasonable use of the land. Standard H is partially met. The minimum variance to allow the existing second-story deck is unknown, given the need for it to be reconstructed. Reconstruction of this deck could reduce the encroachment or eliminate it completely. However, granting this variance for the encroachment of three feet will allow the second-story deck to remain in this location without having to be completely removed or reduced in size. Reviewing agency comments are included in Attachment 3, starting on page 16 of your packet. There was one comment from MOA RightofWay regarding the correction to the ASBILT showing a 10-foot utility easement along the north property line as per plat 73-14. There were no other objections to the encroachment into the side setback. Therefore, the department finds that standards A, B, C, and H are not met or partially met, and standards D, E, F, and G are met. Therefore, the department must recommend denial of the variance. If, after a public hearing, the board finds that all eight standards are substantially met, then the approval should be subject to the following conditions, 1 through 4, found on page 5 of your staff packet. I can answer any questions that the board might have, and the petitioner's representative and the petitioner are in attendance.
Thank you. Are there any questions of staff by the board? Dale? Dave?
Thank you, through the Chair. Just wanted to clarify some of the timetable on this. The staff report says that the deed is from August 2002. And did you guys review aerial imagery near that time?
Through the Chair, Mr. Hale, yes. I checked the deed information, and then I checked aerial imagery from 2002 and 2004 when it finally showed up in our aerial imagery.
So when I looked at it, it looked like there was no deck in September of 2002?
Correct.
And the petitioner said that the deck was built before the Locklayers owned the home?
Correct, but I could not find anything that proved that...
Okay.
That was correct.
I was just trying to get that timeline.
Yep.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Any other questions?
Chair, I have a question, sort of a definition.
Mr. Bennett.
On criteria D affecting the greater use of code, as this is a residence and viewing is part of residential work, does the change in the view act as a... as a criteria for use in a residential? Does that make sense?
Not to me. Change of the view?
Yeah, if you have a deck sitting out there in your view, and first of all, someone can look over the... what used to be the fence, or it might still be the fence there. But also, the view out from the building itself, as your use of your residence, part of that is the recreation of looking and enjoying the view. And if the deck is sitting there in your view, is that an abuse of your... restraint of your use? The enjoyment of your use from your neighbor's point of view?
Through the Chair, Mr. Bennett.
Yes, sir.
Like I stated, the neighbors to the east, where this deck is on the east side of their house, the neighbors to the east have not complained as of today or at any time that their deck is impacting their use of their property or view of their... outside their... out there at existing structures.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions of staff? Thank you. Are there any... are there any questions of staff by the applicant?
I think you guys have all the details of questions you have.
All right, thank you. So, will the applicant or the applicant's representative please come forward and state and spell your name for the record? State and spell your name for the record.
And there's a button on the microphone in front of you. Yep, there you go.
Alaska, and then you said the name. My name?
Yeah.
Jackie Slagle with Deckmasters LLC.
Could you spell Slagle, please?
S is in Sam, L-A-G-L-E.
Thank you. Please state your case.
We are just hoping to get some clarity on this encroachment case. The deck that is currently there is the same exact size, and we would like to replace it like-for-like. So we are requesting this three-foot encroachment, and we will have the piles two-foot back, so it would be a one-foot encroachment with a two-foot overhang. And so we're hoping that we can get that granted so that we can keep the deck usable and keep the large space.
Are you done? You have nine minutes and 29 seconds for rebuttal. Okay, are there any questions of the applicant by the board members? Mr. Hale?
Thank you, through the Chair. Would you mind addressing just the timetable on this? It looks like you guys purchased the property in August of 2002, and there was no deck. And you guys said that the deck was built before you owned the home. I'm just trying to figure out the timeline on all this.
My name's Tom Locklayer. That's correct. There was a deck on the small... on the back of the house. In early... or summer of 2003, we added the part on the side that's in question now.
So you guys built the deck?
We added on to the existing deck that was on the back of the house from original construction.
And where you built it was into the setback, it looks like?
Correct.
Okay.
Because we knew of utility easement along the back fence and on the side, where it shows as a walkway on the ASBILT. But I didn't realize that there was anything on that side of the yard because the utilities were in the back, so...
And you guys didn't use a deck professional or anyone else?
No, sir. I purchased the lumber. I had just had rotator cuff surgery, and a couple of my friends actually built it, so...
Without a permit?
We just had to... cost of the labor or of the lumber with no labor charge.
Okay. So as I understand it, you guys, a year after you bought it, you guys built the deck without a permit, and it fell into the setback?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant? Mr. Flynn?
Can you address the permit from 2008? Apparently, there was a permit that was applied for an enclosed deck? Or portion of the deck that was never closed?
Not to... it didn't retain to the deck. When we built the deck in 2004 or 2003, at that time, we were told that we didn't need a permit if the value of the construction was over... was under $5,000. That's why we didn't get that permitted. The permit from 2008 was... you would drive into the garage, then walk out, and then go back into another door into the house. So, we had that permitted to close that sidewalk in to make an arctic entry. And it was completed, everything was good, but we just never had a final inspection done to close out that permit. And I didn't realize that that needed to be done until this year, or last fall, actually, when we put in for the permit to rebuild the deck. And they said, well, we can't issue that permit until the other ones closed out. So, we got everything taken care of with that, and the permitting office had instructed Jackie that once the deck was finished, then they would close both of those permits at the same time.
So, was it a contractor that had taken out the permit? Did you do it personally and didn't understand it? Or how did that work?
I did it personally as far... I had someone do the construction work, but we had an architect draw up the plan so that we met all the criteria for the permitting, and the permit was issued. I didn't understand that we needed to close it out, and that's why it was just still open.
And your contractor didn't understand that it needed to be closed out?
He... he kind of did this work away from this company, just kind of under the table for doing it. I mean, he is a construction... he worked for a construction contractor, but it wasn't with the company he worked with, so...
Okay, so that's the reason why you personally put the permit... took the permit out?
That's why...
Why you personally took the permit out as opposed to a contractor taking the permit out?
Correct. Well, and actually, the architect that drew up the blueprints and everything for the addition had got the permit issued from the municipality.
Okay. But did the architect give you any counseling on closing out a permit?
He did not. No. No, if I'd have understood that or known that, we definitely would have gotten it done, so...
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Santos?
My question is for Jackie, Deckmasters. If you could explain a little bit about how you plan to rebuild the new deck, all the way from the foundation up, and then possibly add in why it can't be canted slightly in order to follow the five-foot setback?
Right. It will be built with steel piles, so we will come in and drill those, and those will go down, and then there will be a two-foot cantilever over the piles where the beam is. And so that two-foot cantilever would be part of that encroachment, and then it would be one extra foot with that three. We could make it smaller, that is an option. It's, you know, the client just requested to try, to try to make it the same size that it is now so that they don't lose any of that usable space. As far as cantilevering it over more, we can't do that to be up to code. We could go even with like 2x10s and things like that. It has to be at least two feet, or it can only be up to two feet of a cantilever. So that's, you know, as much overhead space as we could save with between the pile and the end of the deck.
So, you're going to take down the deck completely?
Correct.
Fully demolish it?
Correct.
So it could be rebuilt within the five-foot setbacks?
Correct.
And built to exactly what you're supposed to, I guess, potentially build it to?
Correct.
Without... I mean, what's the cost that it would probably take to do that versus encroaching into the five-foot setback?
I mean, the cost for labor and materials would be less as far as... because we would be making the deck smaller. So, the cost, you know, right now, we're paying more to do the variance and things like that, but it really wouldn't cost anymore to make it smaller.
If you were to extend the northern corner and take back the southern corner and keep it along that line, wouldn't it keep about the same kind of square footage?
Possibly, yeah. We could go farther back and then turn and do the stairs, kind of like they are now. If we're just trying to get the same square footage, that would be an option, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Could I address your concerns here? What Jackie was saying as far as removing it, the positioning of the house, we get the evening sun. So if we did take area off the front and move it to the back, it would just be in the shade more. It's so... I mean, that's why we went with that side of the house, because all my friends were like, you should be on the south side of the house. I'm like, no, by the time I get home from work, the sun's right there. I mean, it was built with purpose, but if we changed the shape too much and tried to move off to the back of the yard, then we're going to be back in the shade. We're kind of defeating the purpose of having a nice sunny day, so...
I totally believe you, and I wouldn't want to get out of the sun either. I'm just talking about that five-foot setback. There'd be... what are we looking at here? The roadside, okay, closest to the roadside. We'd take that back towards the house, the three feet, and then we can... you can extend it towards the back corner of your house, looks like three feet. So you would just be canting the side of your deck to your neighbors just slightly?
Right.
To match that five-foot setback line? And I don't think you would lose the square footage if you were to do that, and you'd probably be a little bit more into the sun in that back corner.
It would look different on the front of the house, though. It wouldn't be flush.
Mr. Bennett?
Chair, I have a question. Is there an entry door on that northwest side, which has the wider deck as it exists now? Is there an entryway on that side, or is the entranceway on the northeast side where the stairs are coming down off the deck?
It's on the northeast... it's on the northeast side where the stairs are.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none? Are there any questions of the applicant by the staff?
No, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. Anyone from the public wishing to testify? Anybody at all? Okay. Does the staff have any rebuttal?
I do not, Madam Chair.
Does the applicant have any rebuttal? Nope. Then, the public hearing is closed, and the matter rests with the board. May I have a positive motion, please? Mr. Hale?
I move in case 2024-0028 to approve a dimensional variance from AMC 21.06.020, Table 21.06-1, Table of Dimensional Standards Residential Districts to allow an existing second-story deck to encroach three feet into the five-foot side setback, subject to the conditions shown on page 5 of the staff report.
And Mr. Santo seconded? Will the... Mr. Hale, would you speak to your motion, please?
Yes, thank you, through the Chair. I'm going to support staff on this one, and the reason why is because the deck is being rebuilt, and this is an opportunity to come into compliance. For this board, when you're... if someone come to us preemptively to build a house and they want to build it into a setback, there need to be certain conditions, eight of them, that need to be met. And we would tell them, you know, don't build into the setback unless there's a reason for it, you know, if there's steep topography or some other, you know, reason why you need to. In this case, it doesn't look like there is really a reason to, and since you rebuild the deck anyway, that gives you the opportunity to fix it and to come into compliance. And it does kind of look like you could tilt your deck a little bit and follow that setback line and maintain a lot of the square footage, I think is what you were kind of alluding to. So, I don't see anything in code that allows us to allow this variance, and so I'm not going to be able to support it, unfortunately.
Thank you. Mr. Santo?
When it comes to this, too, I agree with the city on this one, and I won't be able to support it because with a few tweaks to the design of the deck, I think you could probably keep the square footage of your deck and keep in compliance with the city. So, I will probably not be able to vote in favor for the variance, and I think with a few tweaks, you should be able to keep your sun and be able to keep the square footage of your deck with just a little bit of, I guess, small alter... or small alterations to the deck. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none? Are you ready for the question? Okay. The question is on the adoption of a motion to grant a variance to allow an existing second-story deck to encroach three feet into the five-foot side yard setback, substitute conditions shown... the four conditions shown on page 5 of the staff report. A yes vote will grant the variance, a no vote will deny the variance. Please vote. There are zero votes in the affirmative and five votes in the negative. The variance is denied. Sorry. So... We moved the election of officers to the end of the agenda. I don't have a report... I don't have a report. Nothing from the secretary. We don't have any committees. Board member comments. I'd like to welcome Mr. Bennett to the board. Thank you very much. And we are to election of officers. So nominations are open. Mr. Hale?
I'd like to nominate Ellen McKay as chair and Brian Bennett as parliamentarian. I don't know if, nominate myself or?
Can he nominate himself? You can.
I'll nominate myself for vice chair unless anyone else wants to do it. You can get the big seat, next to the big seat. Okay, I'll nominate myself for vice chair.
Okay, there's a motion on the, on the, let's see, we need a second, I guess. You moved. And Mr. Santo seconds. Any discussion?
Doing a great job.
If I could talk, that'd be great. Any objection to the motion? Seeing none, the motion passes. I'm chair. Mr. Hale is vice chair. Mr. Bennett is parliamentarian. Keep us in line. There is a description in title 21.
It's everyone's job to understand the Robert's rules, but somebody's supposed to have a little better idea than we do.
Okay, now I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And seconded, moved and seconded. We are adjourned. Can I help you?